I don't have a magnet, just you. Where's everybody, Tina?
How you doing? I'm Armando. Nice to meet you, Julian. Nothing, not even myself, my wife takes that, that role. Just, just the parks that are in the LAL. Yeah, I, I call this the...
You speaking tonight?
Yeah.
You speaking tonight?
I am, yes sir.
But probably not the thing I'm speaking about.
Maybe, maybe not. Hi, I have repellent here.
They're gonna go to the gift, you just want to...
Oh, okay.
I'm like, for our sports programs.
Gotcha. Put them right down here, no way, they're out of the way.
Here, I'll take them.
Alright, they're good.
We're the only two down here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, this is the best seat in the house. On that end. On that end it gets cold, on this end you stay out of the camera and you got all cool. So you have a whole two days on the job, huh? None of them are mine. I don't handle the youth commission, that is under state clerk. I only have the one thing on there and that's the landscape contract.
Got Jim coming down today.
Oh yeah?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
All right, we are reconvening from closed session. Anything to report out?
The City Council convened in closed session for two items for conferences with legal councils identified on the agenda. There is no reportable action.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, so can we have, do we do roll call again? It says roll call.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson.
Here. Please stand for the silent player and the flag salute.
Councilwoman Lozano, you have to ring the bell, you're under the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we replay the statement, I would like to introduce our interim HR manager, Joanne Narlock. Welcome. Thank you. Replay statement, please.
This meeting of the GALT City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 22nd at 9:00 a.m. The City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. All right, any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions? On presentations, we're going to pull item G3 until July 16th. Anything else? Okay, presentations, we have the GALT Youth Commission Student Member Appointees and administering the oath of office.
All right, this is going to be in two parts. First, I'll give the agenda report so council can make a motion to accept the student members. And then, second, I'll call the student members up so they can take their oath of office.
Okay.
So, the recommendation is to accept the student member appointment selected by the GALT Youth Commission Adult Mentors. Per GALT Municipal Code Section 2.85.050, student members shall be interviewed by the adult members of the commission. Each student member shall be submitted for acceptance by the City Council and shall serve for a two-year term commencing on June 1 and ending on May 31. The commission received 13 applications. Six were selected, which are attached to your packet. Did you have any questions?
I did not. Okay.
We just need a motion.
And what motion to accept?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, I'm going to call up the youth commissioners.
Could you have me say your names since I don't think we brought up their names? So, if you want to introduce yourselves?
This isn't just for your public.
My name is Betsy Robles.
My name is Gabriel Coonsey.
My name is Ryan Yamnover.
I'm Jennifer Bakers.
I'm Ollie Humberger.
I'm Jane Mitya.
So, if you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am state your name.
I am Jazzy Roriz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am a student member.
As I am a student member.
Of the GALT Youth Commission.
Of the GALT Youth Commission.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of commission member.
Of commission member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, you are now officially appointed to the GALT Youth Commission. Next on the agenda, we have the, it doesn't say who's doing it, but we have the GALT Youth Commission Annual Report to the City Council.
Would you please state your name?
It's on. State your name, though. But you can state your names.
I'm Kyle Roberts. I have served on the GALT Youth Commission this year as vice chair and with the case actually who was serving as secretary. And thank you for the opportunity to present the 2018 GALT Youth Commission Annual Report. For those of you who don't know, the commission is made up of 10 different high school students. This year, there were six students from GALT High School and four from Liberty Village. In August, we opened offices. And personally, I feel that this is a very good opportunity to gain more skills on the commission. I myself gained a lot more technical skills by being able to set agendas with the chair and one of our mentors as well as greater communication skills by being able to monitor flow of discussion in our meetings.
As you can see, our purpose is online and the ordinance. Being on the commission is a great way for it to encourage youth in the community to get more involved. We are able to help your community and be able to be a team perspective in this. On the commission, we feel it's really important to be able to create a type of community or family. And since we're going to be able to spend a year together, we need to get to know each other. We're able to do this in several different ways. One of our ways was the ice cream social, which was for the parents of the commissioners to get to know who we are and what we do, as well as meet the adult mentors. We also had our annual retreat, which was an opportunity for us to get to know each other as we live. We got the opportunity to do the consumers room preserve and nutrition, which was a way for us to spend time and talk together. So, after our first meeting of the year started, we continued with these team building activities, two of which included visiting the escape room as well as meeting with our family. These two activities were centered around building more trust and confidence between all of us within ourselves as commissioners. I think it was very important to continue these team building activities throughout the year because it really helped to reinforce everything that we have established in the center. I think along these team building activities, the most important was probably our annual retreat. And what we got to do there was really establish expectations, not only of the commissioners, but of the adult mentors as well. And aside from this, we got to kind of set our goals and directions for the rest of the year. I felt that this was so important that I'm actually helping to, I was meeting which I report to the end. I've talked a lot about building trust.
Through these team building activities, and I feel that this was very important because it led to a higher level of discussion on the commission. And what this ended up looking like was a greater flow of ideas between commissioners as well as more constructive criticism. I think this really helped to shape more meaningful projects on the commission this year.
One of our main aspects of being on the youth commission is being able to do community service, whether that was by helping guide runners or giving out water at the Keventon Memorial Run, or being able to start that holiday spirit at the lighting of the ninth. The commission was happy to do all these events as it helped us serve and be able to participate in these events. In addition to being able to do community service, we were able to start our own three different projects. One of the first projects that we were able to do was the Random Acts of Kindness Week, which was started by Juliet Rodriguez. Throughout this project, we were able to do different things to put smiles on people's faces, such as being able to give roses to people at the Golden Living Center, or being able to do baked goods for the school secretaries. We were also to be, we were also able to do a field day for students at Marango Ranch. The senior technology project was also created by Jamie Martin. Her main purpose for this project was to be able to help senior citizens be able to navigate through technology. That was by doing, by helping them set up emails, or being able to send texts, or being able to chat with their family through Facebook. This is a great opportunity for us to be able to connect with people of all ages in our community.
So, the final project that we were able to put on this year was the Find Your Future Club Collaboration, which I was able to head. And the intent behind this project was to give elementary, high-needs elementary students more fun and educational opportunities that they might not have had otherwise. And what this ended up looking like was a six-week club where they got to learn about coding. And it was really awesome to be able to hear from students who were telling me that this is really hard and I'm not sure I can do it, and at the end of the six weeks, seeing what they had accomplished. In addition to that, it was really awesome to be able to form those bonds between other youth that participated from the high schools that weren't in the commission, as well as to see different youth and other organizations participate in our other projects this year. Another thing that was really stressed on the commission this year was finding a presence or voice in our community. And the commission really gave us the avenue to do that through presenting to local service organizations such as Rotary and Lions, as well as giving us that chance to write about subjects that were meaningful to us through the GALT Herald editorials, as well as even being able to provide feedback and more ideas to the city through the Climate Action Plan. So, aside from developing stronger public speaking. So aside from developing stronger public speaking and public writing skills through some of the things that I just talked about in the last slide, another thing that was really stressed this year was leadership. And how we talked about leadership was through a reoccurring agenda item called Lessons of Leadership, where we got to reflect on what being a leader meant to us and how we could play that role of a leader in our community besides being on the commission. Something else that we were able to do was take the GALT Strengths Finders Test, where we found our top five strengths. And we were able to relate those on how to be a better leader, as well as how we could use our strengths in team settings. So going back to developing those stronger leadership and team building skills.
We would like to thank all the organizations, partnerships, and people who were able to support us this year. The GALT Rotary and Lions Club were a huge part of our success during the Pancake Breakfast, which was able to help fund our scholarship. We also got support from the Comfort Inn and the GALT Historical Society, which they were kind enough to donate a space for us to grow as a team. We also want to thank very much to our adult mentors and council member Lamson for being able to support us and guide us this year. I want to also congratulate all the outgoing commissioners for all the hard work they've done this year for the commission. We can't wait to see all the bigger and brighter things they can accomplish in the future.
So as someone who is able to be on the interview panel this year for the commission, and someone who's seen firsthand all of the skills that the incoming commissioners have, I'm so excited to see what kind of things they accomplish in their next two years on the commission.
We really appreciate your support. Not only is this making a difference in our community, but it's also making me a more confident person. Sorry. I can't wait to come back to the commission next year and make an even bigger impact. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Good job. Good job speaking.
Thank you.
Mr. Councilmember Zano?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank you for your service. You know, you have a lot probably going on with studies and other extracurricular activities, but to then, you know, put yourself in a position to serve the public is real important. So really want to thank you and the rest of the commissioners. Thank you to the adult mentors also. I know it takes a lot of time out of your schedules, and many of you are part of service organizations and boards and other things as well. And so thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, it was a very busy year, as everybody can tell. You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Looking forward to next year. All right, moving on. We have Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito Vector and Control District Annual Report to the City Council.
All right. My name's Gary Goodman. Thank you very much for the invitation to come out and talk a little bit about vector control, what we do, and what we're anticipating for this upcoming season. Our district is centered, or our headquarters is in Elk Grove, and we also have a satellite office in Woodland, but we cover all of Sacramento and Yolo County. It's over 2,000 square miles, quite a bit of a diverse geography as well, leading from the delta all the way up essentially to urban Sacramento, where we have the majority of the population. And then in Yolo County, a significant amount of agriculture, which produces a lot of mosquitoes that then has an impact on the population centers that we have. And so GALT is kind of like one of those areas as well, kind of this island of population that's really surrounded by agriculture and wetlands, things like that, where mosquitoes are going to start to come into your area. So very diverse from a geographical perspective, and then serving almost nearly 2 million residents. So some mosquito habitat, very easy for us to spot. Essentially, you're looking for stagnant water, you're looking for that vegetation interface. So things like rice fields, wetlands, those types of things, very easy for us to spot. We can drive right by. If we see greenery out in the middle of the summer, we know that there's water and vegetation interface. And so essentially, those are definitely significant breeding grounds for mosquitoes. But some of the more difficult things for us to find are water in your backyard. And specifically, over the Memorial Day weekend, just a few weeks ago, we had unexpected rain late in the summer and happens to fill up these containers that are in people's backyards, which then can start to breed mosquitoes. We visit, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see there a green swimming pool. Just over the last month, we visited almost 1,200 green swimming pools in Sacramento County alone. These breed thousands and thousands of mosquitoes, can have an impact on an entire neighborhood. So clearly, these are things that are difficult for us to be able to try to find, and that's where we start to utilize the public help in being able to identify if they're being bitten by or bothered by mosquitoes, and/or if they know of a neighbor that may has a pool that might necessarily not be being maintained. But clearly, even also with sprinkler systems and those types of things, anything in your backyard that can hold water for a week or so, we want to make sure that you're going around your yard once a week to dump that out. Because mosquitoes, their life cycle from the time they lay an egg to the time they become an adult, takes anywhere from seven to 10 days. So we ask the public to try to make sure that they're not breeding mosquitoes on our own property. Our focus, we use what we call Integrated Mosquito Management. It starts with public information. So we have a very active social media campaign, actual advertising with radio, television, print. We do a lot of public events, going out to fairs on the weekends, or even neighborhood associations where we'll give presentations to. So we try to essentially get the outreach and education out to the general public so they know what to do to try to prevent breeding grounds of mosquitoes on their own property, but also prevent themselves from being bitten and contracting potential disease. The second portion of that is what we call our Surveillance Program. We set traps throughout the district, essentially looking for different species and types of mosquitoes. And then we're gauging the abundance, and is the abundance of mosquitoes going up or going down? And of course, we also test mosquitoes to see if they're carrying specific diseases. And the one that we're most concerned of here in the Sacramento Valley is West Nile virus. And so again, we set traps throughout the district, collect those essentially on a daily basis, and bring them back to our laboratory in Elk Grove, and then sort them by both sex and species. So here in our central valley, we have about 22 different species of mosquitoes. Not all mosquitoes are created the same. Some transmit disease, others do not. And of course, only the female mosquito bites. Essentially, they're looking for the protein in your blood to be able to produce their eggs and lay their eggs. Male mosquitoes only feed on nectar. So, but that's part of our Surveillance Program. Our biological control program, there in the middle of the screen is our small mosquito fish. They're about two inches at our facility in Elk Grove. We have 22 ponds that are dedicated towards breeding these small fish. We plant them in rice fields, wetlands, even unmaintained backyard swimming pools, horse troughs, wherever they may take care of the mosquito population for us. We plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year just in Sacramento and Yolo County. We're probably the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. And of course, that's free of charge. So all you have to do is give us a call, and we will come out to your location and plant those fish to make sure that they're going to be successful in those areas. Then we have an ecological management department where we have some heavy equipment. We have a dump truck, backhoe, and we work with landowners, specifically U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Fish and Wildlife, the Nature Conservancy CRP, and making sure that they're not breeding mosquitoes on their property. So a lot of things that we do is kind of clearance of ditches. So a lot of times, that water that's running through a ditch is choked off by berries and things like that, and it starts to then back up into the property and then create mosquito breeding. So we'll work with the landowner to be able to try to help facilitate clearing that brush so that the water flows through, and we're not backing up and breeding mosquitoes on property. And then the last aspect is chemical control. So the majority of our staff goes out and looks for mosquito breeding ground on a daily basis. And so they're looking for backyard swimming pools, they're doing what we call service requests, going to people's homes, they're looking at those rice fields or irrigation ditches, and treating them accordingly. And then when we start to get high abundance of mosquitoes in the summertime, and specifically virus activity, when we start to detect West Nile virus in either the bird or the adult mosquito population, then we'll start to do what we call adult mosquito control, which is anywhere from a backpack to an ATV to a truck, and then of course, airplane is an option for us as well. So why do we do this? Well, specifically because mosquitoes can carry a number of different diseases. West Nile virus is the one that we're most concerned about. It is a bird disease, and so it's actually harbored by birds and then vectored by mosquitoes. So mosquito bites an infected bird, picks up the disease, and then bites another bird and passes it on, or can bite a human and pass it on. But mosquitoes also transmit other exotic diseases, dengue, malaria, chikungunya, Zika was in the news a few years ago. And then dog heartworm is one that we also have here as well. So there's a specific mosquito that transmits dog heartworm. So make sure that your pets are protected from that. So this is a brief snapshot of what happened last year in terms of West Nile virus activity in California. There were about 218 human cases, and that's a sharp drop-off from what we had in the previous years. We are attributing this a little bit to the fact that we're out of a drought, which is a bit counterintuitive. But what happens in a drought season is because West Nile virus is a bird disease. Wherever you get, when you have less water, wherever you have water, you have the congregation of both birds and mosquitoes in the same location. It tends to transmit or amplify the amount of virus that we have. So the fact that we're kind of out of the drought tends to mean that we have more mosquitoes because we now have more mosquito sources. And if you've driven up and down I-5, there's plenty of standing water that's out there that we're actively looking at. So we may have higher populations of mosquitoes, but actually hopefully lower virus activity. And that's what we're hoping will continue again this year, in the fact that we've had so much recent rain and we're out of the drought. One thing I want to do, do want to try to highlight is the majority of these cases that get reported end up being the very serious, what we call neuroinvasive form of the disease, leads to encephalitis, paralysis, blindness, and of course, even death. And so those are the ones that tend to get diagnosed. A lot of times, people may feel symptoms of West Nile virus, but never go to the doctor. So general symptoms of West Nile virus are similar to the flu. General fatigue, body aches, rash, you don't want to necessarily get up, so you want to kind of stay in bed for a few days, and a lot of times, your body recovers. But the CDC Centers for Disease Control estimate that for every neuroinvasive form of the disease, you have another 30 to 70 that really go undiagnosed. So you're really talking about tens of thousands of people in California that are impacted by West Nile virus. And so we want to make sure that the message is clear that this is a very serious disease, but there's some very simple things that you can do to try to help prevent it. Here's an outline of the city of GALT and activity that we had last year. Not a lot of activity, which was good. In fact, GALT for, and I won't call it for some reason, because the residents do an excellent job of not breeding mosquitoes on their own property in GALT. We tend not to have a lot of virus activity in GALT, which is good. But you can see from the red circles there, actually, it's the same location where we picked up positive mosquito samples last year. And then you can see the yellow triangles are locations where we picked up positive birds. So those are birds that were reported by the public. We picked them up, we tested to see if that bird died of West Nile virus. So not a lot of activity that happens in GALT, which is a good thing, but as you can see, surrounded by agriculture, which breeds a lot of mosquitoes, and then those mosquitoes come into town. So what are we anticipating for 2019? Specifically, it's difficult for us to predict, but what we're hoping is that the general trend of being out of a drought will lead to less virus activity, and that followed a similar trend of what we saw last year. But clearly, we have a lot more mosquito breeding grounds, and so our crews have been very busy these last couple of months in responding to the recent rains and those things that have started to fill up those breeding ground mosquitoes. We are also currently on the lookout for the two bottom mosquitoes that are there. They're not the same. One is 80's egypti, the yellow fever mosquito, and the other is 80's albipictus, Asian tiger mosquito. And the concern with these is that typically, these were not found in California. These are typical mosquitoes that are found in South America, Central America, and Mexico, but they're starting to make their way up into California. And the concern is that these are very efficient vectors of those more exotic diseases, so dengue, malaria, chikungunya. And if they get established here, then we may have local transmission of those diseases. And so we've been on the lookout for these for a number of years, but there are established colonies in Southern California, and even as close to us as Modesto, which is a very similar climate to what we have here. So it's probably only a matter of time. We get reports from the Sacramento County Public Health Officer in terms of transmitted cases, or I'm sorry, cases of exotic diseases like chikungunya or Zika. Typically, these are contracted from areas during travel, so they've traveled to an area that's endemic for those diseases, and then they come back home, and then they exhibit symptoms. Again, we're on the lookout for these particular species because these are the ones that could pick it up from a human and transmit it to a local human. And so we want to make sure there are some slight differences associated with these mosquitoes in the fact that these are very active day biters, and they like to be around people. They like to be in homes, and that's where they're going to bite. So if you're being bothered by mosquitoes in the middle of the day, give us a call. We want to know so we can come out and make sure that we don't have these particular types of mosquitoes. So what do we ask the general public to do? We have what we call seven Ds. So the first is drain any standing water. Make sure on your own property, you're not breeding mosquitoes. Go around your yard once a week and dump out any containers that your sprinklers may have filled up so that you're not having, you're not causing a own problem in your own neighborhood. Dawn and dusk are times to avoid being outdoors. These are times when the mosquitoes that transmit West Nile are most active. So during the daytime, they're usually hunkered down in brush or in the shade, but in the evening time, they start to come out. So if you, avoid going outdoors during those times, that would be ideal. If you can't, then dress in long sleeves and long pants. The less amount of skin that you have exposed, the less likely they are to get to your skin and bite you. If you can't do that, defend yourself with an effective repellent. We buy these repellent wipes by the pallet. We have thousands of them. I delivered six boxes here today for the Parks Department to be able to use. We want them to be used, so if you have events, movies in the park, concerts, whatever, evening events, those types of things, baseball games that happen, give us a call, be more than happy to deliver, and we want them to be used. It's a similar campaign of what you've seen with sunscreen. You know, 20 years ago, people didn't want to put on sunscreen, and then you started to see the impacts of that in terms of cancer. And we want to make sure that repellent is also one of those things that people start to use on a more habitual basis. Doors and screens should be in good working order. Specifically, in the evening time here in the central valley, we like to open up our windows to get that delta breeze to cool off the house. Make sure your doors and screens are in good working order. Mosquitoes are very small, and essentially what they're doing is they're finding the carbon dioxide that you exhale, and that's how they find their hosts. And so they'll find their way into your house and bite you while you're sleeping. You want to make sure that if you're going to open up your windows, that you're keeping your good screens in order. And then, of course, district personnel are available to help. This is what we do. Typically, if someone were to call our office, we are out there either that day or the very next day because the earlier that we can find that mosquito breeding source, the less chance that we have that they're going to lay more eggs and create a larger problem for us. So we typically respond within 24 hours. And you can get more information at our website, which is fightthebite.net, or give us a call, 1-800-429-1022. So with that, does the council have any questions?
So just to recap, the service you provide, this is a free service?
Absolutely. Paid for by tax dollars, yeah.
Someone sees standing water they're concerned with, or they have a green pool or something. Even if it led me to go a little bit out here, but let's say someone has a pool, they don't take care of it, they can't afford to, whatever, it's gone green. They can call you guys, you guys come out, plant fish. You would do that?
Correct, yeah, absolutely. We're not going to turn it blue, which is sometimes what the neighbors want. They want it cleaned up, but we're going to make sure it's not going to breed mosquitoes, and that's really our charge.
So we have, I have a family friend who had West Nile. She got West Nile, and she, and it's no joke. I mean, she was able to just, you know, all regular functions as most people are, and then she got West Nile, and now she has to use a walker to walk, speech is a little slower. I mean, it's nothing to joke around about.
Yeah, it can be a very debilitating disease, and that's why we want to try to get the education out to general folks as to what they can do to try to help prevent that.
So what you're recommending is do not go outside at desk without mosquito repellent on.
Without mosquito repellent, absolutely. Long sleeve, or just walk very quickly. They're not that fast. So if you run, yeah, you're good.
That's probably not going to happen on my part, but anyway. We really appreciate you guys coming out. We appreciate the service, and it's great to know. Hopefully, we can get that phone number up somewhere on the website so people can get ahold of you guys if they need to. It's great that we can just call and ask for help. It's wonderful.
Absolutely. And when we do detect virus activity in the area, we have a newsletter, we reach out with public PR campaigns as well, and we'll let the council know if we see anything in and around the GALT area to make sure that you can use your resources to get out to your neighborhood associations and just alert the public because we're all essentially in the same boat there.
Wow.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you so much. All right, public comment. Can you read the public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for city council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any item scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Okay. We have Mr. Mike Guthridge, who would like to speak on trash.
Well, I don't know if I can top those last two comments about everything, so, but I will say that it's interesting to know about mosquitoes because we've bought it a long time when we was in the ranching business. I'm here tonight to give you a document that we came with from the trash people, and it shows what our, what our cost was, and I'm talking about GALT Village again. The 18,000 compared to 104,000. So I think it's important that you look at what we have here from, this came from the, from the fine folks over there at the trash department. And you can see the difference in the two, what they, what they, what we've got to pay for the 104. It's all broken down. But I am hoping that the council is still, will But I am hoping that the council is still working on something going forward that is going to take care of this situation. Because I, I told you last time, and I'll tell you one more time, that we won't pay $104,000. That's a given. And when I said we will see you in court, that's what we will do. I talked to Lux Taylor, I think some of you know Lux, and now he's in Stuttgart, Germany, but he said we're going to give it our best shot, and so that's what we'll do. Because that's just ludicrous about having to pay $104,000 compared to $18,000. And you say, well, sure, it goes back to the tenant, but that's not the way to look at things. They only got so much money to spend, and it sure the hell ain't going to be on garbage.
Thank you, Mike.
You know, we feel, as you know, we've, our, our company and the shopping center and Emerald Park Company, you know, we've been in the, in here in Galt since the 80s. So we have a pretty good background of what, what has happened through the years and so on. So I'm just, I was really surprised to see this situation get this far without having more comment or more, something that would tell me that. Who would ever think that you would be paying $18,000, and all of a sudden you're going to be paying $104,000? I don't think there's a person in this room would think that that's the way it should be. So I'm just, one more time, I want to make sure that everybody understands that we will go forward with this situation with an attorney to make sure that we are held in court and so on and so forth on this item, because we are not going to pay $104,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Guthridge. Is there any other public comment? That was the only card I had filled out. Does anybody else want to? Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer? Councilmember Sandu?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion?
I had a meeting with the South Sacramento County Habitat Preservation Plan. It was approval of the budget and so forth. They did receive one of their fishing game, US Fish and Wildlife permit as of June 12th. They are planning a get-together celebration of sorts sometime, I believe later this month or early next month. Date hasn't been set. As soon as I find out, I'll let you know.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, just real briefly, had SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting last Monday. We discussed the regional housing initiatives, and I'll begin with interim city manager and community development director on that, moving forward, making sure that we have everything in place that we need to, as a city, to help with that issue regionally. And then we got some, a little bit of bad news this last week about the Green Means Go program, where we were asking the legislature for $400,000 over four-year period. And, and so that was not included in the, in the budget, and so that's not going to go forward, but we'll find at SECOG a different way to help fund some of those projects. So that's all I have, and we do have a SECOG full board meeting this Thursday in Citrus Heights.
Okay, thank you. As one of the directors of the Air Quality Control Board, I was able to attend the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District with the California Municipal Fleet Academy on last Wednesday. I took Director Sullings with me, and we were able to learn about sustainable fleet management. They have training for our city employees. They have through, is it through American River College, I believe it was? They have training for our students who want to learn how to repair electric vehicles. They have welding certification. We learned so much about what's available in the electric vehicle, less emissions, all the grants that are available, getting off-the-grid solar power that will save everything in a battery and then give it back to your equipment instead of kind of going into smother PG&E so you can use it yourself. So kind of encouraging as we work on planning our transit station out. Hopefully, we can get some help with that. And so that's about all on this. All right, next up, information consent calendar. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have to read them all? I think I have to read them all. Motion to approve minutes of the special meeting of May 15th, 2019, regular meetings of May 21st, 2019, and June 4th, 2019. Receive and file warrants for the period ending June 5th, 2019, and accept the treasurer's report as submitted. Motion made by Councilmember Lozano. Can I get a second?
Do the second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. I don't believe we have any scheduled matters or regular calendar. Regular calendar's the city manager's office. Okay, appointment of city council members to shop local committee.
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, good evening. As you may be aware, the Galt Chamber of Commerce operates a shop local committee which promotes local shopping within the city of Galt in order to support all of our local businesses. The shop local committee has begun to reconstitute itself in the last couple of months, and city staff, myself in particular, have been regular attendees and helping the shop local committee reorganize itself for its intended purpose. Clearly, with the Galt market and the Chamber of Commerce, interests align in promoting both activities at the market as well as activities at our local businesses. And we held a bit of a strategic planning session several weeks ago to kind of outline some of the projects and programs that are of most interest to the shop local committee itself. One of the items that was raised at that time was that the council previously made some council appointments to the shop local committee. I think two council members may have been appointed, and the committee was interested in having the, the council consider doing that again. So this item is before you tonight for you to discuss whether you would like to make an appointment or appointments of your council to the shop local committee. Regular board meetings of the shop local committee are on the first Wednesday monthly at 8:30 a.m. Those business meetings will take place at the Bob Beederman Conference Room at the Parks and Rec Building on Chaboya. And the shop local committee itself, or subcommittees thereof, may meet then on a weekly basis in downtown. Recently, it's been at the Old City Cafe, I believe. And so they may do that, but the, the central meeting that we're talking about now and that staff will regularly attend is the first Wednesday of every month at 8:30 a.m. And so with that, I leave it to your discussion amongst yourselves to see if you want to make an appointment or appointments to, of your council to the shop local committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Vice Mayor Cruz and I were the last appointees to that, and when we, when it came up with the new election, it was determined, I believe by the city manager, that they no longer needed to appoint council members to that. I don't know how that decision got made, but I congratulate you bringing this back and working with the shop local. I've heard really great things. They're very excited, and working together with the city is very positive. So I'm very glad that interim city manager Haglund took the initiative and got this going again. But with that, do you guys want to do two? Would you want to do one and then a backup?
I regularly attend, I mean, when I can, which is most of the time anyways.
So what is asking if you guys want to do one or two appointees?
I think just do two, so if the other one not available, as long as one will be available.
Councilmember Lozano?
I, I agree. I think we should have one and an alternate. I think, I think this is awesome. Thank you, Tom, for jumping into that, and it's important for our community and our business community to connect with city halls, so.
Absolutely.
I, I don't necessarily, I mean, I have an interest in it, but time constraints at work wouldn't allow me to, to participate with all the other committees, so, yeah, I think.
Yeah, I, I think Paul and I are probably the most flexible unless, you know, obviously any of us are welcome to come.
Right. I missed quite a few because of work schedule, so I appreciate you guys. Campion?
That's fine if those two.
Can I get a motion to appoint?
I would move to appoint John Primary and Mr. Sandu as alternate.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, made by, do we, we do need a motion, correct? Okay, made by Councilmember Campion.
I wanted to make a little comment real quick about the, we had some great ideas.
Can I finish the motion?
Sorry.
Made by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Thank you.
I was just saying that there was, it was some great ideas that came out of it. I'm glad to see Tom kind of interject some new life into, and some new ideas into some things we're doing. There's a whole gamut of things that were suggested to kind of really trying to help, you know, promote local business, everything from, you know, some, some contests around Christmas time. There's like business decorating contests, and there's like a cash award, just some of the small things, you know, get people, other things to incentivize people to go into local businesses for certain things. There's been some ideas of some things on social media, like certain days of the week, like I forget what day we decided, but like on a Monday, we were going to post something, you know, basically, you know, asking everybody in the community, tell us something positive that you've experienced with a business in town. You know, with all the negativity that flows on social media and stuff nowadays, it was just, you know, a positive thing. You know, tell us about a good experience you had at a local restaurant or a local business. And then, you know, that kind of becomes contagious and spreads. So just things like that were really, you know, good ideas that, you know, everybody was brainstorming. So I'm, I'm happy to see that, because I think we need to remind a lot of people that live in our community that don't really shop locally, that we have a lot to offer here. So good to see the new life in the committee.
Okay. Is there any public comment on that? Okay. Anything else, any more discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations and good job. All right, Parks and Recreation Department, Award of Landscape Maintenance Service Contract, Director Solis?
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, I'll provide just a brief introduction to this item, and then I'll turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director to review the salient points of this recommendation. So as the council is aware, the, the city is embarking on a mission over the course of the summer to correct our very significant budget deficits in both the general fund and the Parks and Recreation Fund. And that will cause us, over the course of the summer, to evaluate a number of options for the reduction of expenditures, so that we can bring to the community a balanced budget and a commitment to live within that balanced budget. One of the areas that we have taken a look at comes to us at this particular time because of the timing of our landscape contract for our parks and lighting landscape districts themselves. Our contract with our current landscape maintenance firm will conclude on June 30th, and we want to be able to have a landscape maintenance contract underway the next day on July 1st. One of the things that you will immediately notice with the recommendation on this landscape maintenance contract is that as a measure of reducing costs, we are recommending a lower level of services at our parks and landscape areas generally, in the general park areas, but that we also recommend maintaining weekly mow service for our sports fields themselves. This, again, comes to the council because we are, as we reviewed at two previous meetings, one in May and your last meeting on June 4th, that we really need to take very expeditious action in reducing our overall expenditure loads in Parks and Recreation and the general fund, so that we can maintain a proper, healthy, fiscally sustainable budget outlook over the long term. And so with that, by way of introduction, I'll turn over the rest of the presentation to our Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Armonde Solis, Parks and Rec Director. So today, the charts that I gave you in the staff report are a little confusing, but I had to put that, all that information out there, so it's for the record. So I'm going to go through down and break, break it down for you what each option is. So our status quo option right here, this is what we're paying for right now. We're getting an irrigation tech, ground cover, weekly mowing, turf aeration, two shrub pre-emergents, two hard fescues, that's basically the cutbacks when you see in the landscape when they're trimming everything, and three turf fertilizations per year, and one pesticide. That's what we're getting now through proceedance. So when, when I refer to these, this is going to be the core, this will be the status quo, the standard that we'll be changing. So estimates came in from the contractor for the first year at $430,000, $449,000. And then we had budgeted $441,000 for this service, so it came in under budget. So now here you'll see all the core services are the same, except for the weekly mowing. It now goes to a bi-weekly mowing, but we still keep the weekly mowing for all the sports field. And just keep track of this option 1A, 1B, you'll see the next option, the only thing that changes is we mow the parks every three weeks, keeping the weekly mowing of the sports field. And option C, we go monthly. Now, the sports fields are sports complex, community park, Walker Park. The, the parks that you're going to get mowed once a month would be like Monterey, Lake Canyon, those type of parks. So comparing option one, the standard here, here's option two. We've now cut back to two fertilizations per year and one landscaping on the, like on Corollion, all those bushes would be just cut back once a year. Everything else still stays the same. Option two came in at $416,000. We do the bi-weekly mowing, $396,000. Three weeks, $354,000. And this is going to be our recommended option. So option 2C would go monthly mowing for the parks, still weekly mowing for the sports field. We do a two turf fertilizations, and that will help with the growing of the grass, cutting it back. We're also going to be doing some things like watering less. We'll still keep them green, we'll keep them alive, but we're not going to water as much. That'll also be a cost savings in our water bill that we get. Believe it or not, yes, we get charged for water, sewer, and all those things too, and our garbage. So this is going to be the recommendation. I know when somebody reached out to me and asked, well, why wouldn't we go every three weeks? And that's totally up to council, because you can see the cost savings would be $54,000 if that's an option you'd like to choose, but we felt waiting an extra week would be worth the $54,000 in the, in the price difference. So we also went into a mow and blow option. So we thought, okay, what if we bring in landscaping in-house? We did it ourselves, might be cheaper. We didn't know until we got the bids, and it really wasn't. So this is nothing. This is a mow and blow option for everything. The only thing that they would continue to do is give us an aeration per year, because we don't have the equipment to do it. That's the only thing that we've asked them to do. It, it would cost us about $109,000 to do that in-house, that portion in-house. That's what we've estimated. That's what we've estimated it out. So, it's really, when you look at the numbers, they really don't add up. You pay another $30,000 and you get them to come in and do all of that work, $35,000. I'm going to give you some examples of what this looks like because you go, hey, you know, that doesn't sound bad, but I want you to realize what it's going to look like because I don't want you being caught off guard. So, this is a freshly pruned area. Just that day that the picture was taken, it had been cut back. Whoops, this is a six months to nine month of growth. So, this will only get cut back once a year, not twice a year, in our recommendation. Just got cut back, six to nine months of growth right there. Same thing there. So, now the grass, this is a freshly cut grass. This is the specs that we asked them to keep it to, under two inches. This is two weeks. It's kind of hard to see, but I wanted to give you a couple of different angles so you could kind of tell the length at which these are going to be at. So, staff's recommendation today is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a two-year agreement for option 2C with the option to extend the agreement for up to three one additional year periods with crossroads facility services incorporated for landscape maintenance services for city parks and properties for $299,400 for fiscal year 1920 and $301,196.40 for fiscal year 2021. I also have Armando Morales here, our Parks Maintenance Supervisor. If you'd like to ask him or me any specific questions about what we're going to be doing, how we would be doing it, we're both available for you to ask any questions.
So, to clarify, this is for the parks and all, like the grass and the things we see out in front of subdivisions?
Yes, Corillian Boulevard, Walnut Avenue.
The little trees out here?
Yes.
Okay, out there, so that includes everything. So, you and I discussed this and our landscaper had the option of, of another year. What, so what happened with that?
Mr. Proceda basically said there just wasn't enough money in it to do it. Costs, labor costs are going so high that it really, it kept the lights on for his business, but that's about it. It was a lot of work for a little bit of pay.
So, he didn't want to renew the contract?
Right.
He said, no way.
It was his option not to renew the contract.
Good to know. Go ahead.
I have a few questions, Armando, so, and I sent you some of them in advance, as you know. So, just to clarify, I mean, this is our citywide landscaping. This is, I mean, this is not just like a few parks. This is like.
Every park.
Roadways. And so, just for the public, how long have we had an outside landscaper in company?
We've, I've been in charge of parks, I think, four years now and then easily, I believe, 10, 10 years, Armando?
About 10 years, okay. So, I, watching your slides, I actually have a couple of new questions, so, so apologize.
No problem.
So, once a year doing the hedge clippings like you saw, they do that once a year. Clearly, I know at home, if I wait, you know, outside of my normal pattern, then it's like twice as much work. So, I'm sure the landscaper realizes that if you do it once a year, it's going to be like, yeah.
Right.
So, out of these options that you presented, I mean, look, nobody, nobody up here, nobody listening wants, wants to see, you know, things look certain, but the harsh reality is we understand, I mean, last week we were presented with cutting programs in Parks and Recreation. I was adamantly against that. You know, I can't be against everything. There has to be, start, there has to start be some savings put into play. And I, I support this and, but I will have questions against the two last options. So, 2C is the one that you're most recommending?
Yes.
And the main, the main, the main gist of that, the difference is, is we're going to a, a once a month mowing of the parks other than the sports fields, but the sports field get mowed once a week still.
Correct.
Okay, and then everything else, like hedges and clip and bushes and all that kind of stuff happens?
Once a year.
Just once a year.
And right now, it's happening twice a year.
What about weed abatement and the?
They, they're still required to, to keep the weeds down.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the trimming is to make them look pretty, shape them, that type of thing. They'll still be required to.
So, it's not all tidy and groomed, it's just kind of letting them, but we're not just going to let like, you know, big weeds?
Weed, weeds aren't allowed to be grown, but we'll still go out there. And that's what the, the spray is to, to keep them down also.
And the watering you mentioned, so, we're going to, we're going to talk about cutting back on water, but, but not to a point where we start browning out our, our parks and stuff? We're just going to go back to a minimum?
That'll be a decision you make, not one that I'll make.
A different decision, a different time?
Different decision, different time.
Okay.
We're working on a PowerPoint now. Those options will be on the table for you to look at. But at this point, what we're going to do, since we'll be only mowing once a month, we'll cut back the water basically to stage one watering.
Has there, has there, was there any discussion with, I know I'm kind of splitting hairs, but I'm trying to save every dollar. Is there any to talk about, you know, I know the pictures you showed were with the measuring tapes and all that. Obviously, that looks like spring pictures. Those weren't taken like?
And, and plus, they were, the park was just fertilized the month prior, so.
So, I know in the summer, the grass doesn't grow as much. I know I don't mow my grass as much in the summer. It doesn't grow as fast. So, I don't mow it as much, what I meant to say. So, I mean, is there a kind of thing where if we're mowing, you know, once a month in, you know, consistently at the parks, we could, you know, maybe say like, well, in the, in the, in the spring months where the grass is growing really fast, we could do twice a month, but in the summer, we kind of go a little longer or something? I mean, can we tweak this? Are they open-minded to stuff like that?
We have the contract that, that's, that we have here. We would have to go back, I believe, for RFP, if you would like us to do that.
I don't want to, I don't want to waste time and, and, and spend more money trying to, spend money trying to save money. I don't, I get that. So, the, the savings with the 2C option that you're recommending is basically $141,992?
Correct, from our current budget.
That's per year?
That's for the first year. We don't have an approved budget for next year.
Okay.
So, you, what you see here is what we'd budget, whoops, for next year.
Okay, but it's 100, it's, that's a savings per year. So, we would save, if we went with that, that dramatic of an option, which you're suggesting?
Yes.
We would save that much money. If we went with the 2B option, our savings would only be about half that?
Uh, what, 50, 90?
90,000, okay, so. Okay, and then, the contract term is a year?
It is a two-year contract.
Two-year, okay.
Uh, we have a, actually, we have the right, if we choose to, to back out within 30 days, to give them notice. And we can pull back any type of park. Let's say we brown out a park, we're able to pull that back through the contract.
Okay, and the last quick questions. I'm assuming you guys check, and this is a new company for us, so you've never, we've never used this company before, right? So, my only concern is they were the low bidder. I mean, another company said, you know, first they asked for an increase and they said, you know what? We're not interested at all. They just walked. They weren't interested at all. This company actually came in lower than our original company and then we went above and beyond that and started looking at cost reductions beyond that, right? So, they were the low bidder.
Yes.
So, with any low bidding type scenario, you always worry like, you know, there's a reason why they're so low? Is there going to be like, you know, the service is not going to be a subpar? Did you check references?
Yes, we did. We, we called the city within 45 minutes from here and they gave them a good reference. A city that's quite bigger than, than we are.
Okay, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
One, I'm sorry, you go, go ahead.
You know, I have a comment on this one. The reason we're doing that because we are in a budget deficit, right? We have to make the balance, the budget this coming middle of the year. And I believe on this one, we're saving almost $141,000.
Correct.
And we are not, all the city's sports field would continue to receive weekly mowing service, right?
Yes.
And we are not decreasing any service. The only service we're decreasing on the landscaping, right?
Uh, yes, well, no, the landscaping, so Corillian, Walnut, those type of landscape areas and, and the parks, the neighborhood parks without sports fields.
And then, and still, we have the ability of city and increase the landscaping frequency if other areas of the budget are sufficient to reduce. If we make the budget somewhere else, I believe we can come back to that, right?
Yes, we can make changes to this contract.
So, I, you know, I'm with that to, you know, adopt that. But we have to make one way the other. We are in a deficit. We have to make the budget. Thank you.
And, and please understand, I, if we could keep status quo, that'd be great. But as city manager Haglund has been telling us the last couple of meetings, we need to make some cuts. And this is one that I didn't want to make and I'm sure none of you want to make, but I believe this is probably the biggest cost savings you're going to see from our department without actually, you know, browning out parks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano?
I was just going to say, I, I appreciate the effort you took, Armando, in putting this together. It's really shows what the options are and what the economic consequences are of each one. I am in agreement with your recommendation, staff's recommendation of 2C. I also think that we may see some reduction in water usage because the higher ground cover you have, we may even see a little cut back on those parks that are going to have the taller grass.
Good point.
So, I think, given the circumstances, it's the best option available to the council.
Armando, thank you for taking the time the other, was it yesterday that we talked? Yeah, to explain what I was looking at here because it kind of caught me off guard that one bid was almost double the, the low bidder and that caused a little bit of concern for me. I thought I was reading it wrong and so.
It did for me too.
Yeah, you know, it, it, it does give me no pleasure to, to see service level reductions in our landscape corridors. I think that, I think that affects many things, including, you know, the community's perception of, of what we're doing with property values and things like that. And that, that's, that's just out there. One of the things I have a concern with, and, and we spoke about this the other day, was a, a public outreach campaign to notify the community, you know, that there's going to be service level reductions due to budget reductions and, and maybe some yard signs or things like that around those parks. So, that's, that's real important to me. I think it's important to get that information out to the community. And I would suspect that many of us will start, once those, those service levels are changed, that we'll start getting telephone calls and things like that from, from the community. And so, I'm sure your department will as well and so just kind of be prepared for that. And again, you know, my previous board that I sat on was half Parks and Rec. And again, it just, it does give me no pleasure to move down this road, but I think it's important that we are fiscally responsible and deliver the community a, a balanced budget. And, and this is part of what we have to do. I think the other piece is, as we move forward, maybe not in this contract here or the next, but at least maybe taking a look at other agencies within our region that may have landscape contractors working in their agency and seeing if we could do something where we added on to their contract or as a bid maybe goes out that we get included on that. We might see some other cost savings there. I don't know, but it would, you know, you'd have to reach out to the agencies around here. I don't know what the school district does or the CSD or, I know what they do, but, you know, reach out to some of those organizations to see if there might not be some other cost savings there with the quantity of work. And then, the la, last point I want to make is, or statement I want to make is, we've had a lot of conversation, you and I have had a lot of conversation about looking at our neighborhood parks and, and even our community parks. There are some areas that, but hardscaping walkways and things like that, that are grass, that I think, you know, we could turn into drought tolerant landscaping very easily and it wouldn't necessarily affect the, the programmable area or the, or the, the ability to, you know, be, have a recreation either program or family out there at the park. So, taking a look at that. And I know you're going to bring that back to us.
Right, we, we've been looking at that through those Prop 68 meetings.
Right.
We've been really looking at that, trying to take away some of that grass area and put in some other activities, basketball courts, dock parks, those type of things. So, to reduce our landscape contract, our watering and those type of things.
So, anyhow, those are just my thoughts. I appreciate your time and effort on this report. It was very thorough, once I figured out that the, that was the bid price for each and, and I was able to read a little better, so, thanks.
Well, I have one, I have one more concern. I remember a couple of years back, the youth commission had brought up that they were having trouble getting home from school because the bushes were protruding. So, if it got to where the bushes were completely protruding and covering the sidewalk, so people weren't allowed, able to walk, would, could we make an emergency, go trim it?
I, so when we're making cuts, the, the problem is, I can't have you call me and say, hey, I need you to do this when we've made cuts. I believe, don't hold me this, hold me to this, but I believe the contract says they have to keep it so far off the sidewalk. I, this contract's this thick, so I'd, I'd have to find that area, but I do believe that they have to cut it, keep it back.
Okay, just some concerns for safety hazards like that.
Yeah, I was, take you back on what she said, like, I mean, if there's like an issue with, if we have like a branch or something, that's probably, and we, we can call it Parks and Rec or Public Works and you guys figure out who's going to take care of that and they go, we're not talking about saying, oh, sorry.
We're getting calls that, hey.
Missed that yearly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what Rich said, I like that idea. I would, I think it'd be smart to, you know, post what we're doing because for the people that are not watching this meeting or that are here, you know, on our, on the city's webpage and on the city's social media, kind of talking about what we've done here so they can get in front of this before all the complaints start coming in when they start saying that kind of stuff. Because they will come and I, but for me, look, anybody that knows me knows I'm super picky about landscaping. I mean, I was just out with Mike yesterday, telling him to slow down. Look, see those weeds right there? We need to get those taken care of. That was me yesterday, right? So, I'm super like, I'm always on you guys about the weed abatement and that kind of stuff. So, for me, I understand this has to be done. It's not an easy decision, but if it's, if it means saving rec programs versus cutting back on landscaping, this is always going to be my first choice before we get to the drastic measure.
Parks and Rec already has a little outline of what we want to do. Once we get approval through the city manager, then we'll start pushing that out.
Thanks, Armando. Appreciate it.
Kind of along the same lines. I know we just recently did the city newsletter, but that would be a good avenue as well at, at some point when it's appropriate.
How often does that go out? Every other month?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. Thank you so much. Is there any public comment before we vote? All right. So.
Mayor Lamson, if I could just quickly add one item. I just want to also thank Armando for, and his staff for the work that they put into the bid document itself, preparing that and, and being very thorough in trying to bring to the council various options to, to consider. They, they actually put together what ended up being a complicated bid document in a, in a short amount of time. So, good job.
Thank you. The consensus seems to be for the 2C, so I'm going to read that, read the motion just like it is with the staff recommendation. So, I would need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a two-year agreement for option 2C with the option to extend the agreement for up to three additional one-year periods with crossroads facility services incorporated for landscape maintenance services of Galt City Parks and Properties for $299,400 for fiscal year 2019 to '20 and $3,001,196.40 for fiscal year 2020 to '21.
I want to make the motion, but I'm sorry, I just have a fast question before I do that. That option to extend the contract, is that like, both parties have to agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think you can hold them.
All right, so moved.
Okay, perfect. Second?
I'll do second.
Motion made by councilmember Farmer, seconded by councilmember Land, Sandu? I was going to say Landzu. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Armando. All right, city manager executive recruit, recruitment. Do you want to introduce Ms. Norlick again?
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, this item coming before you tonight is seeking authorization to hire the firm of Peckham and McKenney to facilitate the executive recruitment for the position of city manager. As the council is aware, the city manager serves as the chief executive officer of the organization, responsible for all the departments and divisions of the organization, establishing or recommending, I should say, to the council, the establishment of a, a budget. And ideally, we want in the future to be establishing. And ideally, we want in the future to be establishing a balanced budget. The characteristics of your city manager are very important considerations for this council. And the, what the city would ideally be looking for is a city manager that has the requisite experience both in finance, community development, public works, working with law enforcement, working with public sector labor laws that relates to human resources. And so, there's quite a list. Not that they have to be experts in each one of those areas, but they should carry some fundamental understanding of that and have worked in it. And you also want to have, ideally, a candidate that has managed a significant number of people, and has direct reports that perhaps have their own direct reports, and can carry forward to you the type of experience in managing an organization. And as small as we are, in our minds of being a city of 26,000 people, we are a large organization in the sense that, including our part-time employees, especially in Parks and Recreation, we can have over 300 employees in all the attendant issues that come with that. So, one of the things that cities look for when recruiting for a new CEO is an executive search firm that can help them both appeal to potential candidates and sort through those potential candidates. And the council established a subcommittee consisting of councilmember Lozano and vice mayor Farmer. We put out an RFP for two executive recruit firms, and we received, I believe, four responses back from those executive recruiting firms, and interviewed three of those firms. Those interviews were held last week, and it was the recommendation of the subcommittee, as well as staff, that we hire the firm of Peckham and McKenney, and in particular, Phil McKenney, to conduct this search. Phil has a lot of experience and was able to talk with the committee about recruiting for smaller-type agencies, and what he looks for in candidates for these smaller agencies that oftentimes have a more personal connection with the community, with business, with residents, than you might find in a much larger community. And I believe, and I'll let the, obviously let the subcommittee speak for themselves, but that it was their opinion that Peckham and McKenney best fit that profile. And so, we would recommend them to the full council for approval for me to enter into a contract. The proposed expense for this project is $26,000, and will include not only all the advertising and solicitation of candidates, but Mr. McKenney will also come to the city and facilitate some community input meetings so that we can reach out to stakeholders in the community to hear about the types of skillsets that they believe would best match up with the city of Galt and potential candidates. So, with that, we're recommending that you authorize me to enter into an agreement with Peckham and McKenney to facilitate the executive search, and I'm available to answer any questions, and I know your colleagues on the subcommittee are as well. Thank you.
So, Vice Mayor Farmer.
I'll go first.
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Go ahead, yes.
So, maybe you could explain why you went with the most expensive one? 'Cause I know you're always talking about money, so let's...
I will do that.
Why we went with the most expensive one?
So, first off, let me tell you, so, you know, Rich and I, I think we really went into this with the mindset with, that we, how we feel the council as a whole feels, and that is that, that hiring of a city manager is probably gonna be the most important thing that any of us, the most important position that any of us will hire, clearly, in our tenure. And so, we wanna get it right. And I, anybody that knows me knows I'm not a big fan of always going, you know, I've spoke against using consultants, but this is, you know, so to speak. But, you know, for department heads and things like that, it's a different animal. This recruitment, this is a nationwide recruitment. We're in the mid, we have an interim HR director, and not to take away from any skillset she may have, but I just, I don't think that, you know, it's, we wanna try to do an in-house recruitment of this caliber. And clearly, I mean, I've checked around with other cities, I mean, it's very rare for somebody to in-house city manager. So, we had certain things in mind. Rich and I had certain goals that we were looking for with, you know, with who we wanted to hire for recruitment, you know, and obviously, we wanted to find the best people to come back to you. So, you know, we went in with open mind. We interviewed the three of them. It was long interviews. Peckham and McKenney, Phil McKenney just, he just, for me, just clicked right away. I mean, he just, he said some things that I was basically, you know, reading my mind on things. For example, like wanting to have public forums to, not for the hiring process. We had always talked about having some panels in the interview process of, you know, members of the community, chamber of commerce, business owners, some workers from within our ranks, you know, blue-collar workers from within the city ranks, just to get, to give input on the hiring process. But this was before that. This was just, just in putting together a profile for hiring. Phil McKenney says, you know, I would be willing to, you know, do some public outreach, where we can come and people can say what they think we should, you know, just to really get input from the community. And that's really what clicked for me, and I think Rich as well, 'cause that's what we wanted. So, he was basically, he was saying all the right things before he even knew what we, you know, our questions were. The other, the other firms were, you know, they seemed like very professional firms, but it just, it was, for me, it was a clear choice. And one thing I wanna point out when you talk about cost, is that, as those of you don't know, when we hired Mr. Haglin as our interim, he's a retired annuitant, so there is a cost savings that we're already, are already building right now. And by the time we have brought in a new city manager, we will have already saved that money and then some. So, we knew this going into hiring Tom, that that would be an advantage, that we would have that money there for recruitment. And again, I'm looking for the process. I think we've selected clearly by far what we think is the best person. Very professional gentleman, raised in a small town. You know, he's from Roseville, but he was raised in a small town. He understands. He gave me references. I actually called references, and I, you know, I called these other cities and talked to them. One of them really stood out to me was Fort Bragg. So, he recruited a city manager for the city of Fort Bragg. And Fort Bragg's a small town, smaller than us, but they have a, their sphere of influence is pretty large. They, the council member that I spoke with there, I believe was the mayor, actually, very, very, couldn't, could speak highly enough about Phil McKenney. He said he was very personable, this, you know, he understood what he needed. He was like, he felt like he was just like a friend, coming in and helping out. You know, knew what they were looking for, you know, and 98%, he has a 90, I'm sorry, 89% placement. So, McKenney and Peckham have, or Peckham and McKenney have an 89% placement of five years plus. So, when they place a city manager, they have a 90% success rate of five years. And that's saying something in this day and age where city managers don't last long. It's the typical norm for a turnover. So, that and his experience with the Chamber of Commerce, he was, he's served in many positions with Chamber of Commerce's in Lake Tahoe and other cities, and he's been very involved economically. So, I think he understands how important that aspect of hiring a city manager is, that he wants to be, he needs to be a community-involved person, and that's one of our criteria. So, for that, it checks all those boxes, and, you know, their, the brochure that they're gonna make, and all the recruitment, they reach out to all these different groups, and it's a nationwide thing. So, for me, I liked it, and I strongly recommend we go with this gentleman, and he's gonna personally take care of it himself, you know, so it's one of the partners. So, that's what I got to add to it. Rich, something I miss?
No, I just, I...
I don't think that's possible.
I'm thinking not, but I just, I do wanna emphasize a couple of things. We're going into this, and I think the subcommittee, actually, Vice Mayor Farmer and I, really talked about being open to the process, and really hitting some key points that we want done in this process. And, you know, I can make tough decisions. I can, I don't have a problem doing that. But I think the important piece of this is really getting staff input and outreach to staff members who are working here in our community already, as to what they're looking for in a city manager, getting public input, whether it's, you know, the service clubs and organizations, the chamber, the school districts, and really having their input, and what they believe a good, successful city manager would be here in our town. And then, I really did have that personal connection with Phil. Just, I think we interviewed him for like an hour, hour and 15 minutes, and he really hit every point that I was really looking for. And we asked him some tough questions as well, and he was able to get right through those. And you can tell he's experienced and knows what he's doing. And so, again, I think our committee has met three times, and the last time was for the interviews. And so, again, comes highly recommended, and I would support moving forward with Peckham and McKenney.
I just wanna say, I really appreciate you guys taking the time out of your busy work schedule to meet and do this, and it sounds like you've done a great job. Any other discussion?
Thank you for, Rich, and thank you for Sean, to take their personal time, you know, spend some time to find that firm. I have a couple, like in Paniki on the record. One thing, that company is, did that company we used before? Have we used it, and what was the situation, and who was?
Yes, the firm has been used before.
Okay, and who, what kind of city manager?
I think it was used for a city manager as well as a department head recruitment.
Okay.
I think it was police chief. Oh, boy.
Oh, wait, okay, wait a minute. There's a strike.
You know, the other thing, one more, just a question on the cost of service on the contract. If the city of Galt hired an additional candidate for among those recommended for another position within one year of closure, the fee is $5,000. Can you, somebody, explain?
Yes.
And why we are...
So, that's actually related to their guarantee. So, as was highlighted earlier, the fee is $26,000 to conduct the entirety of the recruitment. A lot of that is in, you know, advertising, obviously, some of Phil's time, and other related expenses to bring about the recruitment. And so, if for some reason, the newly-appointed city manager were to leave within a year, the recruitment would be conducted again by Peckham and McKenney under their guarantee only for the hard costs of advertising and, you know, some travel. They would, the rest of their professional services fee would not apply. And that is actually a consistent guarantee that each of the entities that were interviewed provided.
Thank you.
There's some incentive for Peckham and McKenney to get it right. So, we, that was, that was something, that was pretty impressive.
Yeah, I wanna add just real quick to that. I'm sorry, go ahead. You have, you have questions?
I was just gonna make a motion.
I was gonna say, real quick, just so you know, the hiring of the city manager is ultimately gonna be up to what the city council decides that process is gonna be, as far as when we get to a pool of candidates is given. As Peckham and McKenney is providing us with a pool of candidates that they feel are gonna meet the profile that we provide with them. There'll be a lot of input creating that profile. They will bring us candidates fitting that profile, they thinking, you know, here you are. That could be seven to 10 candidates. There was some numbers thrown around. It would range. But, and then it's up to us. Then we will proceed with more of our in-house, with McKenney still involved in the process of doing our, you know, public panels and that kinda thing, which we plan on using extensively, public input. So, I just wanna remind everybody that this firm is not hiring the city manager for us. That's gonna be up to the city council with input from the community and staff and everybody else in selecting that candidate. This is just presenting us with the candidates from wherever they may come from, nationwide, so...
So, before Kurt makes the motion, or is there any public comment? Come on up to the podium, please.
Councilman Mayor. I have one, one public comment here. How was the last city manager hired? Who can answer that? I know you can't do that, probably.
Through a recruiting firm.
This one?
Thanks.
Thank you.
If there's no more public comment, I'd motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement with Peckham and McKenney to facilitate the executive recruitment position of city manager.
Second? Seconded. And we'll call vote.
Vice Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Lamson.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Here we go. All right, Public Works Department. Galt Landscaping and Lighting Districts Engineers Report Intention to Levy and Collect Assessments for fiscal year 2019 to 20, and set public hearings. This happens every year, right?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Mike Saling, Public Works Director. Bill Forrest, one of our senior engineers, is here to make a brief presentation, and then we'll set the public hearing date. It's a pleasure of the council. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Lamson and councilmembers. Bill Forrest with the City of Galt Public Works Department. I'm the district engineer for the three landscaping and lighting districts for the city, and I've served in that capacity since I have been with the city. Eric, too far. The recommendation before you is to adopt the resolutions declaring the city's intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2019, 2020, for the Westside Galt Lighting Landscaping Maintenance District 1990-02, the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, and the Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three. And then authorize the publication of public hearing notices and posting of the engineers' reports for the three city of Galt Landscaping and Lighting Districts. And lastly, set the July 16th, 2019, at 6:00 PM as the date and time for public hearings for all three districts. As mentioned, this is an annual item before you. This is a map of the city that shows the extents of the three districts within the city. The yellow is the northeast area district. The kinda magenta is the west side, and then the blue is the Landscape Lighting District Number Three. There are also some smaller parcels here within the city. With that, that's all I really have to present, available for any questions. One thing to note, that the engineers' reports reflect the budget that was just approved in early June. And so, the cost savings, as potentially outlined in the just-adopted landscaping lighting contract, are not reflected.
Can you kinda just explain to the public why there's so much white? So, a lot of the city's not covered by the lighting landscape districts, correct?
Correct.
Can you explain to the public why that is?
Why that is, is you have to, well, it's somewhat intertwined with a tortured history of passing a Prop 13, Proposition 13, which limits the setting of property tax assessments. 'Cause previously jurisdictions used to set the property tax based upon the budget of things such as maintenance of the streetlights and whatnot. For example, last year, I was in the city of Austin, Texas, and the papers were all abuzz about the recently set property tax assessments, and they... tax assessments. And they go up depending on the budget. So, with that, in 1990, the city chose to, if you will, compensate for the loss of revenue associated with the passing of Proposition 13. And so, those areas have to agree to form, to be part of that district. We just can't say, oh, you are now in the district. And particularly now with the passing of about a dozen years ago, Prop 218, which further tightened, if you will, the requirements in terms of getting, if you will, annex into an assessment district. So, it just came about, for example, the district number three, which was the most recent district formed in 2005, it includes potentially all the area in the city west of Highway 99. So, that's why you see these little add-ons of particularly smaller development that has occurred within the city west of Highway 99. The largest is Trail Ridge Apartments. They came in for a lot line adjustment, adding additional units. As a condition of that development, they were required to annex into LNL District Number Three. The Family Dollar Store, again, a development proposal subject to conditioning by the city, and they were conditioned to annex into District Number Three. So, that's, there's a lot more torturous history in there that I won't bore the council with.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Why there's so much white.
Thanks for the explanation. So, with that, though, so, as new development comes on, if we see infill development within the older part of town, the white area, is that, those are contingencies that are in there with those people, those new developments will become part of the LNL Three?
Yes, or, as mentioned in the staff report, staff is currently evaluating
Right.
alternatives to landscaping lighting districts.
Right.
Community facilities districts. There's some limitations in using lighting and landscape districts for funding mechanism. And so, we are exploring, maybe there's a better mechanism. So, there'll be one or the other.
Yeah, you're right. And maybe that'll never kind of pass, because we might, we're currently, just for those of you listening, we're currently looking at a gamut of solutions that possibly would bring the entire community under one district, so we don't have some people paying and some not. And obviously, the way the LNLs are kind of set up, they're not, it's, you know, we're backwards. We're running in the red on two of them. They're now, the costs of taking care of those are overcoming the revenue. So, I mean, this is going to get worse, so we have to do something. So, what we're doing tonight, though, is we're basically, this is just a yearly thing that we do every year to ask for these LNL taxes that are on people's property taxes. This is not a new thing we're doing this year. This has been in play for how long? How many years?
The two districts were formed in 1990, the northeast and the west side. Thing to mention, those two particular districts, the revenue versus expenditures are running in the negative, and that is a result of the passage of Prop 218, where it was said, unless it's built into the district, which District Number Three does have a cost of living index to it, you can't increase assessments without going to a vote. So, those, the northeast and the west side have been fixed since essentially their inception.
So, under this levy, this particular, this year's, what we're voting on tonight, it does include the escalator for the LL Three, right?
That is correct.
As it does every year, has a built-in CPI, whatever.
Yeah, it's tied to western states. If the index doesn't exceed one and a half percent for that year, we're allowed at minimum to increase the assessment by one and a half percent.
Right. That's the only questions I have. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. The comment is, even though the districts do have a consumer price index attached to them, that still doesn't make them sustainable. I don't believe. One of the issues that we have is the consumer price index, let's say, goes up 1% a year. We could have water rates, or the cost of mowing, and all of those things that we're, these areas pay for, go up 200% in two years. And so, I think it's important for the public to know that just because there's a consumer price index attached to it, that's still minimal amount of increase per year. It's kind of like, you know, if you have your home budget, and your, you know, your electricity kilowatt per hour goes up, and goes up, and goes up, and you have no more income coming in, or very little, you have to make some adjustments. And so, I think looking at other alternatives other than these types of districts is, for long term, is going to be very fruitful for the organization and the citizens, so that we can have, you know, facilities that are what we expect as citizens, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel? All right, so what do you need from us?
Basically, we need you to follow the recommendations and set the public hearing date for July 16th.
Okay.
Three districts.
Got it. So, adopt a resolution declaring the city's intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2019-20, for the West Side Galt Lighting Landscaping and Maintenance District 1990 to 02, the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, and the Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three, respectively. And two, authorize publication of public hearing notices and posting of the engineers' reports for three City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting Districts, and three, set July 16th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. as the date and time for the public hearings for all three districts. Can I get a motion?
Second. Motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Campion, second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
And Mr. Selling, real quick, I'm sorry, can you just, that hearing, can you just explain real quick to the public what that is, if, just briefly, so they're very clear on the July 16th?
Yeah, essentially, statute requires anytime you have a district of this type, that you have to set a public hearing when you are making the annual assessment. And so, this is simply an opportunity for the public to come, make their comments or whatnot. But it's really a, I don't know, I guess, a matter, a formal, matter of form, it's really a formality, really, to go ahead, per process, to allow the public to provide comment on the district, so they could make comment regarding, you know, what they want us to hear or not, kind of thing, so.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't think we have any communication, do we? No. Okay. And city clerks report, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Comments by staff? Ms. Tyson?
One comment for the public. The city has been engaged for a couple of years now on certain improvements in our IT area. We just recently installed, implemented a new IT network. That network will increase processing speeds. This will impact end security, which is kind of a big deal these days. This is really, the network is kind of the backbone for a variety of IT systems. Everything from the city's website to specialized systems in police and the water systems. So, this is, the public should see improvements. Staff has done a fabulous job of accommodating the IT department to make this all happen, and we're very glad to be able to announce that. Thank you.
Very exciting, and a long time coming, I think. Anything else, Mr. Selling?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we had a great tour of our wastewater treatment plant yesterday, and as well as one of our main water well sites. And I just wanted to thank Mayor and Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Lozano for coming out, and just to extend another opportunity, if you ever desire, Councilmember Sandu or Councilmember Campion. You know, hopefully it was informative, and you got to see, you know, what goes on behind the scenes, because I think, you know, we all don't really think twice when we flush the toilet, or turn on the tap, kind of thing. So, I think, hopefully, it was good for folks to see, you know, what really is going on behind the scenes, and how technical it is, kind of thing, to keep the city's drinking water safe, and make sure that we're, you know, keeping the sanitation system safe as well for everyone. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. It was very informative. Okay, Ms. Norlock, who are you hiring?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the council, the opportunity to work with the council. I've been working with this. I call it an assignment, but I take it seriously. I enjoy my work with cities. I'm a superior, a new tenant. And so, to come back and kind of heal back, you know, something that was given to me, I get rewards just from doing that. And this is also close to home, so I'm very grateful. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Do you have any list of anybody you're hiring right now, or?
Actually, we're looking for an HR director.
Okay. There you go. Director Solis?
I have a couple of events that I want to remind you guys of. The 23rd, which is Sunday, Sacramento County Dog and Cat Wellness Clinic at Harvey Park. Also, on the 23rd, Meadowview Neighborhood Watch will be having a get-together at the Meadowview Park. On the 4th, we'll have the Independence Day Celebration. Anton Run, we're running a little low on registrants, so if you guys could get the word out, I'd appreciate it. And I have some bad news. I was notified by S M U D that they will not be able to hang our flag for us this year. So, I'm reaching out to anybody up there, or anybody watching. If you know anybody high up in S M U D, if you could get us some linemen down here to hang our flag, I'd really, really appreciate it, because it's become a big part of our parade and our 5K run. So, we have a couple contingency plans in place in case that doesn't happen, but I thought I'd throw that out there, so.
I would suggest the fire department, maybe.
Yeah, that's one of our hoping, yeah.
Okay, we will get on that. Chief Sockman?
I just have two items, Mayor and council. On the 21st is the Special Olympics Torch Run.
That's right.
I have the honor and the privilege of lighting the torch, the Flame of Hope is what they call it, at East Lawn Cemetery that overlooks Kevin Ton's gravesite. It is the eternal flame. And because of that great honor, the Northern California Games take place at UC Davis. And so, that flame that I have the privilege of lighting is the same flame that is run through the streets, Elk Grove, Sacramento Police Department, up to the Capitol. That same flame is, remain lit for all the presentations and speeches, and then it continues across, through Sacramento, across the Tower Bridge, over to West Sacramento, pass off of the Davis Police Department, and into the games themselves. So, truly an honor in it. It's because of Kevin's dedication to the Special Olympics, and the commitment that he had to them, and the impact he made on the athletes. So, and then on the 27th, we have our first annual Safety Expo, and that's at the Galt Market Grounds. It's from nine o'clock to one o'clock, it's free to the public. We're encouraging kids to come out with their bikes and their helmets, to have a free fitting, show off their skills. And we have bicycle repair folks out there to do a full inspection on the bikes, make sure that they're safe. We have a lot, a lot, a lot of people in public safety that are going to be out there, the different teams, like SWAT teams, and K-9, and the fire department, and a whole bunch of our partners in public safety are going to be out there. So, I want to give out a special thanks to the CSD Fire, and the Galt Parks and Rec, because without them, this thing would never have gotten off the ground. And this is a brainchild of a couple of employees inside the police department. They took the initiative, they presented it, and it's the staff at the police department, the fire department, and at Parks and Rec that took care of this. We actually tried to stay out of as much as possible, and let them run with this thing. And I couldn't be more pleased with the effort that they put into this.
So, it's Thursday, June 27th?
June 22nd.
June 27th.
It's a Saturday.
Saturday, June 27th. At what time?
It's from nine to one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Haglund?
Mayor Lamson, members of the council, at your public comment tonight, you had a public comment from Mike Guttridge, a longtime member of the community, builder in the community, amongst other things. And he spoke to you about solid waste rates, says they apply specifically to commercial trash and recycling. And as you are aware, and the community has become aware, the effect of trash rates on our commercial businesses have significantly increased to a point that has, you know, sparked some, a very significant level of concern, as was evidenced by Mr. Guttridge's comments. I just wanted to let you and the community know that representatives from Cal Waste in the city have met as late as this afternoon to discuss potential ways in which there may be, even if temporarily, a, some relief from the ultimate effect of those rates. And although we haven't been able to identify a particular path, it does involve some fairly complicated issues, both on Cal Waste Part, and issues related to the mandates passed to the city by the state of California. And so, we will continue to work with our refuse hauler, Cal Waste. The meeting today, I guess I would describe as productive, and we have agreed to meet again next week, and we will continue to do that, to see if there is some way that, some measure of relief from the maximum commercial rates can be achieved. I can't clearly promise you or the community anything in particular, but I do want you and the community to know that both sides are meeting and talking. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Ms. Hood?
Nothing, other than that, I got to enjoy the Galt Sports Complex quite a bit last weekend for baseball. So, thank you, Armando. It was a very nice facility. We all enjoyed and complimented, so thank you.
All right. Councilmember Campion?
Nothing of, nothing specifically. Nice to see Tina here tonight.
Yes, thank you for filling in.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, just three things, I guess. Thanks, Mike, for having us out at the wastewater treatment plant, and the well over there off Live Oak. That was very enlightening. Had the chance to go out to the Taste of the Market on the 9th. It wasn't really overly attended by people in the community, but I think, being it was the first one, it was extremely hot that day. I think as we move, as that program moves forward, we'll probably see some more folks out there. And so, appreciated Parks and Rec kind of taking that on, and trying something new. And, you know, if we don't try it, we don't know. So, let's see how it goes through the summer, and go from there. Go ahead.
I can guarantee improvements on the next one.
Yeah.
We already have, we have some things, plans that'll come out on Facebook and our social media platforms, so you'll see an improvement.
Good deal. And I don't think it was any lack of effort on our part. It was just, you know, perfect storm. Again, was the first one we did, and the weather wasn't cooperating, so. And then, had a chance to be, to go to coffee with a cop on the 8th, and that was a great job, and thanks to Vice Mayor Farmer and his business for hosting. That's it.
Councilmember Sandu?
The only thing, last week, I attended a Galt Chamber special meeting, and I attended as a chamber member, not as a city council member, and there is a council, there is a, chamber members, all of them have big concern, they have a great concern about the recent trash rate increase, and I listened to the meeting, thank you.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Thank you, Tom, for that statement. Think the public appreciates, if we can, you know, keep them updated, so thank you for that. The Coffee with the Cop, yeah, it was great, I was very happy, very pleased with the turnout, thank you PD for doing that. Finally, finally got a date working, we worked on it for like a year, but dates just never matched up, but it was great, it was a good turnout, a lot of people came out, and the K-9 was the star of the day, of course, which we expected it to be. Went to the library reopening, which was good, that was well-attended, very nice. I went to the actual opening, and then came to the official, you know, with all the ceremony and all that, it was great, there was a lot of people there, they did a critter show there, and they had some bugs and critters, and it was very interesting, so, that was, that was great, and it is amazing to see how many people really use the library. Like, I can only imagine being shut down, how much that impacted, because it was, there was a ton of people there. Then I got to go to the wastewater treatment plant yesterday, thank you for that, great, very educational, I mean, it makes you really understand, like, you know, what goes into running a facility like that, and then the well, of course, and you brought us, you know, your guys are, your staff's very knowledgeable, Matt Green, it's Matt Green, right? Super sharp guy, like, you know, doesn't, when you look at him, I mean, like, he's like an Einstein, but when you look at him, like, he doesn't think, but he's sharp, he's very, and he's the guy that just got promoted to that position, right? So, very good facility for someone who's ever been out there, very educational, and then last thing, which was really, really cool to go to, was the grand opening of the Galt High Stadium, so, new stadium, pretty much 99% done, I think, or closely, but it was really hot, but it was a huge turnout for that, you know, going to Galt High myself, and that's my alumni, it was, you know, remember the old stadium, and it was, it was, it served many years, but, you know, the new, new facility, it's awesome, so, I think it's much better than Liberty Ranch, because I'm a warrior, so, just saying. Anyways, that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Farmer. I, yeah, Liberty Ranch kids over there, right now? So, I attended the cleanup day, which was the first one, Vice Mayor Farmer wasn't able to attend, noted, but it was, it was really great to get out with some of the local youth and the beautification committee, and we kind of cleaned down C Street and picked up a lot of garbage. There wasn't as much as I anticipated out, so hopefully, people are starting to pick up after themselves, but it was, it was a nice day, and the weather, thank you, was wonderful. Coffee with the Cop, it was great, thank you. I attended the, I was actually able to speak at the ribbon cutting for the Galt High Stadium, and it's, it's so exciting for our town to get two stadiums, because I often go with the kids and see how other stadiums are, and we're almost the only school that doesn't have an all-weather track, and so now both schools have us, so it's, it's really exciting and for that, and for our junior teams to be able to use them. I went out, thank you for the wastewater, I was able to bring the Director of the Air Quality Control Board, and the Director of the Transportation and Climate Control, so they were actually really impressed, and they asked all kinds of questions, and our facility is right up there, top-notch, and so, just so the public knows, there is no smell out there, really, you, when you're out there, you're kind of surprised, there really isn't a smell, because they have, they have little, they call them bugs or bacteria that eat all that stuff, so, it's just quite fascinating how that gets from, I think, your flesh back to your drinking water in a day and a half, we were thinking, anyway, so it was very educational, and I attended the library and the market on Sunday. Hopefully, I know a lot of the vendors have other commitments on weekends, and that's why they love Galt on Tuesday and Wednesday, so hopefully, we can get a few more out there. We look forward to some more fruits and vegetables and things like that. Anything else? And thank you for your statement, Tom, we've been trying to get something out there. All right, meeting adjourned.